Do we want to tap in Kim?
Yeah, we'd better. We'd better call Kim. I don't know how to look this thing up. It's Suzanne too.
Your home cannot be completed if dialed.
Oh, you have to dial nine.
Suzanne, it's 10:00.
At 10:00. Did you say dial nine?
You have to dial nine and then...
You must first dial a one and the area code when calling this number.
Hi, you've reached the end of the line of TV Turner Design. Please leave a message or they'll get back to you as soon as I can.
At the tone, please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up or press one for more options.
Hi Kim, it's Steve Oppenheimer. We're trying to reach you for the 9:45 hearing for 33 Skating Pond Road. Why don't you call me on my cellphone when you're ready? 617-519-54011. Thanks, bye.
We've only got 15 minutes to this. Okay, I'm ready to start the hearing. Move to site plan review for 33 Skating Pond Road. Jonathan, I guess you're going to be doing the heavy lifting on the presentation? Or what's your plan?
I'll do half the lifting and then have Steve lines with the landscape, fill in some particulars on the plantings.
All right. Your part of the lifting should go pretty fast because we've only got about 15 minutes.
I plan to zip.
But just to take a minute to start. There are only... Many of us, a number of us on the board, three of us, have never seen anything that's going to be proposed before this evening. We're completely in the dark. Our landscape consultant is not here, so we're not going to be able to hear what her input would be. She wrote us an email, but it's a little cryptic. We just tried to reach her on the telephone and we got our answering service, her voicemail. So we're a little bit behind the eight ball here. One of the people that we talked to, Roy Channelbash, isn't here tonight. So we're going to try to get a picture of what it is that... Where you are in your discussions with Steve, with Roy, and with Kim, albeit without being able to get Roy or Kim's input on this. And then we'll have to... I think we're going to have to continue and then talk about it in more detail later. So that's kind of where we are.
So I'll get rolling. The house was built in 2006, which was the subject of the site plan approval because the size exceeded the threshold. It was over 6,000 square feet. The Zacarians purchased the property in late 2012. When they purchased the property, they knew that they hoped to make some changes to the site plan approval. The plan you can see, and Steve, why don't you come up here as well, shows both where the original limit of work was out back and where the proposed... Have you got something that'll show that better?
Yeah, the original. Limit of work line is shown on this plan. It's not changed. The approved limit line back here and across here as well. The best thing is your rendering.
The approved limit of work here and the proposed...
Right here.
The proposed limit of work back here.
Yeah, Steve has a nice...
And the rendering here... Quite different.
For the rear areas, where we're only talking about changing the limit of line is... The approved line at the back is the front line here, as we saw in the site lot, back through the shed and it runs up in here. And we're proposing just to do, so we can get our mitigation planting and...
So we're confused. Okay, existing...
That's oriented a completely different way, is this okay?
Sort of, not really. Here it is, the shed in the rear.
Okay. Existing limit of work proposed. This is so we can very seriously augment. So this would be the additional one. What we have, I think this photograph, I'll give it to each of you, shows. This was taken in 2013 overhead. The two things the Zacarians are hoping to do is... Originally, they were hoping to take out all of this. They met with the consultants, Steve and Roy, and the site walk. They're convinced that a tree well right here has to stay, so they're living with that. They're hoping to remove this that's butted right up against the house.
Now you're flipping it over.
Right.
That's really the orientation like that.
Yeah, if it's going to match. If it's going to match this. So the two concerns they had were the front, where there's basically two buffers on the front. One on the street and one right up against the house. And this, is that her?
Yeah.
Sean, I'll wait till she's on the alley.
Yeah, if you would, please.
Al?
Hi Kim, I saw you were calling. Did you need to be on FaceTime or will just do...
No, I've seen the plan, so I think I should be fine.
Okay, so they're just describing the changes.
I was saying, Julie, the two things that the Zacarians were hoping to accomplish is... And this shows what they're hoping to accomplish, but make it so there's one buffer out in the street and not a second buffer here. But they are saving that tree well because the board has made it very clear that the tree well is going to stay there. And they hope to push back this lawn a little bit. Right now, the lawn just goes to here. It doesn't even quite reach the limit of work. They'd like to push it back this far. And I think the one thing that's helpful is to give you some backdrop on the lot, especially in the rear. The lot, there's large ridge of outcropping right here. And this is, we took this photograph today. This is me standing on top, taking a picture of my associate right here. This is a ridge that's right here looking down. There's, as a reference, there is the generator. The generator should show on this plan. And on the other side, this photograph is taken. There's a ridge on this side as well. So you have a ridge coming up here. It's a very long ridge. And you have a smaller ridge coming up here. This is the open area right here, and I'll show it to you. Here's a photograph that shows where these photographs are taken. This photograph is taken right from the middle of the rear of the house looking this way. Here is the one place you can see a house on this lot. That's a new house that was put in about a year and a half ago, Al. That was the site plan approval, was about that time. That's the only house we can see, that's the only gap. What you have... You have a very large expanse on this side, behind that tall ridge, before you get to anything. And on this side, you have that smaller ridge. And then you have this strip here, which is vegetated, which actually, the Zacarians don't own it. Mr. Krupp here owns it. But they have the ability to vegetate that if they want. They just can't put a structure on it. You wouldn't want to put a structure anywhere. But so you have quite a... Can't see this house at all. The new house does not show. That's the only house you can see, the one that hasn't reached the tax assessor's map yet. But it's right between those two numbers right there. So that's the lot in the back. And in the front... In the front, well, you've got this photograph here. I know you wanted to turn it around from orientation. This is from Skating Pond. Skating Pond Road comes right straight down here. And Skating Pond is right here. And you can see that on the plan, right here. And then, Skating Pond Road takes, and I believe it's even more than a 90-degree turn. It just takes a very sharp turn. So what we're showing you here is coming down the straightaway on Skating Pond. This is the buffer that's there now. There's the entrance. And this is that, we call it the 90-degree turn. This is closer. You can see the island on the driveway. I have to get my orientation right there. And closer still, you can see, this is the angle which you can see the house. But in honesty, right now, these, and Steve will walk you through, these are river birches. All this screen here is deciduous, so five months of the year it works. The proposal that Steve will walk you through is going to make it much more of a year-round screen. So that's the need. We're looking to increase the buffer out of the street and take out some of the buffer that goes right up against the house. And we've met three times since we filed, there's been a site walk and we heard concerns. Then we met at the site... Then we met with Betsy, Steve, and Roy, and we heard some concerns such as move that no disturb line and our initial proposal was too far. And then Steve lines met with Kim at the site. And I'll have Steve walk through what the proposal is, but there's been a number of changes. We moved the line, we are saving the tree well. And the initial proposal was to move that shed quite a ways back. We're not moving it much back at all. Now, that shed was not put in by the Zacarians, but it was not put in with an amendment to the site plan approval. We do not know when it was put in, but it wasn't there. Obviously, it was there when they purchased. Now, this overhead doesn't show it, but it's got to be in the shadows because this was 2013. And by then, the shed was there. So Steve, if you could walk it through.
I think the best way to do this in a timely format for these folks, because they're going to be there on Miriam after this, is the kind of presentation presented as we presented the site walk. I know our most concerns are in the rear at this point, but we'll just present it as we went through on the site walk. So when we're standing out at the 90-degree turn here, we initially raised concerns about flagging our entrance as a real driveway and not as a continuation of the road. We've dropped out of the gate scenario, dropped those completely out of our plan. We're proposing to increase the rubble strip by about six feet in cobblestones. Still building stone, New England fieldstone pillars at the location as proposed before where the gates were, 30 inches square, five feet tall.
David, you haven't heard, there's people drive right into the street.
You were at the initial site walk, a year and a half ago. But so still have marking, stone pillars there to really highlight us as an entrance most closely to the street. Again, no gates.
And where are the size of the pillars?
30 inches squared, five feet tall.
And when you're going through the landscape, can you point out what's new and what's existing?
Yes, yeah. So also to highlight more, to stay with that entry theme for a minute, is to just put a single row cobblestone edging on the driveway itself to more highlight it as a driveway. It's just one wide standing on edge, just slightly proud of the driveway. So to work, the reworking of the... And this was initially when we started the conversation with Kim on site a couple of weeks ago, to rework the plantings. The first thing we did on that walk was to talk about the existing trees within the tree well or that ring of no disturb area. Kim and I, and also another landscape designer with me, we identified four reasonably healthy, deciduous, mature trees that will stay. And they're more closely to the edge of the driveway. And those are located... Here, sorry. They are the open rings, one, two, three, four. It's those four to remain.
And those are, did you say evergreen?
No, they're deciduous. They're Norway maple, red maple. There's a black cherry in there. And there's also that one for sure, tallest one in there is white oak. So the other trees to be removed out of that zone, the other trees to be removed out of that zone, but transplanting back into that zone, we have, currently, there's three river birches that don't provide as much screening out on the tail of this cutting. We'll move those into that zone.
So move from where to where?
There's three right out, practically currently today, there's three right out behind where the pillar is proposed. Well, these are the new plants that are proposed. They currently exist right under these three.
And they're moving to...
Inside the tree well, one, two, three.
Steve, you've purchased...
I know where they are.
And they're moving into here as Ts. The transplanted trees are going to be here. And they're shown right in here. And there's also some smaller shrubs. Not small, they're about four-foot mountain andromedas that are also in that zone currently, just on the edge of the tree. We'll move those into, for an understory, under those as well. And those are evergreen shrubs. And also to come back in here, on the left side of the entry, and put in taller maximum rhododendrons, inclusive of the ones that we already have there, to get to the understory of those hemlocks, the current understory. To get to those pads right there. That's correct. These are our current hemlocks. And so beef this maximum rhododendron up. And then also...
Right here, right here.
So the area that then remains where the birch trees are removed is to come back in and plant five 14- to 16-foot hemlocks. To continue a solid barrier.
Those are leaves.
That's correct. So that'll make a solid barrier here. There'll be no lawn connector at all in here anymore. Remember, we were able to walk through there before. So nothing at all in there. So slide the birch trees into the tree well area. Rework the edge of the tree well a little bit to help the ceiling falling into the tree well. It gives us a little bit more shoulder as described in the site walk that Kim's suggestion was.
Riprap. Were you still doing that?
It's proposed, yes. It's all noted on the technical site plan. Which I'm just trying to not work through this because it's, for time-wise, it's this note right here. Rebuild tree well with boulder riprap wall to better retain driveway. So then the remaining of the plants that we saw really crowding the house in the front area here, off of the edge of the tree well, all of this work that's this way, as we saw on there, is to be transplanted. Ones that are viable, we identified viable trees by, I think I can move them. Meaning there's eight birches back here.
And those are the edges?
Yes. There's eight birches in here. There's three white pines and there may be two Colorado blue spruces. These are going to run to the rear. All coming to this back line. These are all noted on this table here. Transplants are all listed here and where they go.
Birch is kind of like the wet feet though, is that going to be wet enough there?
We'll run irrigation out there to get them established. This is about the same elevation as here and here, in terms of relative height. These are all in irrigation now up here. They'll do fine back there.
Clear these.
Those are all those existing trees. These are the trees that's based on the septic tank.
Okay, so those are the...
Yeah.
So those are all coming out?
Yeah, so take those out and move them to the rear cluster here.
But not all of them. Looking at one, two, three, four, five, you know, all of these are just gone.
Those are to be transplanted.
And these Xs are to be transplanted?
No, these are to go because they're not viable to transplant. Yeah, I can't take everything out of here, they won't live. Not everything got picked up on this. The shadow, the back shadow of this is an original Metro West plan.
It's just hard to tell what's being moved, what's being cut down.
It's all in the list.
But where it is.
Right, right, right.
So what's going to be left here is grass.
Yeah, so remember when we were looking through here? Everything was with a tree well, so it was kind of a mobile understory under there. The idea is just to, now that we've created this front buffer, is to just smooth that grade through, get rid of the bumpiness of the tree wells, and simply put lawn there.
So not a grade change.
It's not a grade change, it's just smoothing it out.
Well, it's re-grading.
Just by taking tree wells out. There's no, if I were to have somebody pick up a topo in this zone, it would never, none of these lines would ever change because they're not picking up individual hubs of tree wells, or water wells, if you will.
Yeah, water wells, the best, same as a flower garden, if you will do.
So to make all these changes, transplant all these, is going to require a fair amount of fertilizer and stuff like that, which, how would you control that for going into the...
Fertilizer for which?
For plants.
For the transplants? Yeah, so one should use a healthy start, it's a very benign organic product. It's a very even balanced, it's a 333 product. It's basically composted chicken manure.
Well, we're so close to the pond, is it going to, you know, nitrogen load the pond?
Conservation has seen this.
Yeah. So my question to you is, is it going to nitrogen load the pond?
No, because there's not, all the trees are going to be gone out of this zone. The new trees, not any closer than all the old trees were. And also, there's a whole mitigation area down here that was all done too. These were all newly planted trees. This is the restoration area that was done.
Potted concombs.
It's down here, so we have to maintain. So with that inventory in mind, we move to the rear.
Is this a new contour line?
No, it's not. No re-grading happened.
You just pick this out because it's the decimal contour, 220 as opposed to say...
Yeah, they highlight the 10 foots.
220, okay.
Highlight the 10 foots. So with our inventory from the front moving to the rear, I'll just jump all the way to the rear back first. The shed relocation, just to accommodate the addition of the lawn, adding the stone wall in to help with the grade change.
And the height of that wall?
The height of the wall is two feet.
Where is that?
The wall sits right on our, right where that roll back down to the existing lawn line.
This is not there now.
That's correct, that is proposed. A new two-foot retaining wall.
But there's an existing grade there.
There's a grade change.
Yeah, just a very fast roll.
What is this limit of work?
That's the old one.
The original.
As of 2010.
That's right. So that's this line right here, Steve.
And you're pushing it back.
To somewhere in here.
And that area where everything was cut down?
Is there.
Is that where the lawn is?
Right through here.
It's supposed to work here though.
Just right through here.
It's got to be this one. It's got to be an arrow from here.
It's hard for us to find the proposed limit of work line. Is it through you?
Right here. Do you want to highlight it or pretend?
Is this right here the proposed limit of work line?
Yes, correct.
All the way to the boundary?
Because we need to plant them there. Here it is. This one's bad. Right there, it's the proposed limit of work line. But the proposed lawn line is only there. The only reason the limit of work line is here is because I need to plant in this zone.
Well, we can write the conditions such that you can plant there and then it becomes the limit of work line.
Then I'll bring this here. I'll bring it right behind the shed.
By the way, why are we saving the shed? What's so precious about the shed?
It's not an inexpensive piece of there. I could get it permitted through the billing department.
It doesn't have a billing permit now.
With the approval of planning board.
Yeah, I mean, but what's so wonderful about it?
grandchildren like to play there. It's there, it'd be a shame to...
He's not young.
It was built on site, it's a little too big to move.
He brought the...
It's a little too big to move off-site.
He brought the big match up. He's not going to play. I have three under five, and when we bought the property, it was a feature that they could play in. The thought is that they're going to screen that. So the hope is that, the intent is that it's impossible to be seen from that one house.
That's right.
The screening is both transplants, and can you tell us the number of new plants?
Yeah, and then there's 40 additional trees to work as natural understory back there in the mitigation area. And that's all again on that list.
And the generator is proposed?
It's permitted. It's in the building file as permitted. It is permitted.
Right at the end of the wall here. It's a little garden, but it's right there.
And it's already there.
It's permitted. It got through, it was one of those tweener, pre-robbed times that all of the planning board billing files didn't have paint stickers on them. They now do. Somebody went in, pulled permit, they got the permit without planning board review. It's happened to me before. It's happened to me before. I got a pool permitted on the site.
Not because of the carriers, if that's what you mean.
No, it predates.
Yeah, we don't know. They just had one owner.
You have to understand, we just discovered all this. So it doesn't matter to us, you know, it's not...
Well, just the research on the...
David was asking who did it.
The research on the building files shows that...
But it's not S O D D, some other dude did it. As far as we're concerned, it's done.
No, I thought I was responding.
And it got permitted, the generator got permitted, the shed didn't.
Right. So we're just trying to fix, you know, we walked, our first exposure, we don't know who did what. We walked back and what had been a forest just got shaved off. And so...
And it's still shaved off.
And it's still shaved off, so that's what we're trying to grapple with. It doesn't matter to us who did what.
Yeah, I understand. The basic...
You know, our stuff is all, I mean, this was a site plan. It was in with the deed. It should have been known what it was and what it wasn't. And, you know, that's unfortunate, but...
And we're here to help it out.
The basic proposal here is, you know, there was cutting here. It's up against that ledge. The thought is, let's do it extremely aggressive, where no one sees it. Let's do an extremely aggressive action here where there was not cutting, but that's where you can see through to the house. So we're talking transplants and very aggressive new plantings to totally screen. Is that better the gist of the proposal?
And by count, what was taken out of, when we were walking in this area back here? That list of 40-plus, things going back in is well within that range.
Is the sound of the generator attenuated down to 40 decibels at the...
I don't know the specs on the generator.
Well, I mean, it really needs to be.
I don't know.
I mean, 40 decibels at the property line, at any property line.
Steve, does this reflect your recollection of your discussion of Roy's and...
Well, we didn't get into any details. We didn't get into a proposal. We asked you to come back with a proposal, which is what you're doing tonight. We did say that the objective was to restore the no disturb area, which is not what you've done. So I guess I'd like to know why not.
Truthfully, no, no, no. We were all ears at that meeting to see if we were told to restore it. Restore did not come out, we were waiting to hear it. But yeah, so we knew that was an issue out there. Didn't come up, so the proposal was, let's instead of restoring where what you're hiding is a 15-foot ledge, let's augment tremendously, augment in the one place where you can see the house behind there. So take all those trees that might have been... So take all those trees that might have been put there, and put them over here, along with the transplants, but I didn't hear it, I'm listening.
I don't, I think you didn't hear it.
Yeah, did you hear?
I don't recall that word, no.
But, you know, but the other thing we left is, we're gonna walk it with Kim and see, and I guess the walk with Kim, I know Kim's there, was primarily in the front.
Oh, and we addressed the back as well, absolutely, yep.
My suggestion with Steve was, I thought that adding in some shrubs in that area where things were cleared out, so, you know, native understory type shrubs to augment and start to, you know, enliven that ecosystem back there was a better solution than leaving it clear. So I, that was the first thing that kinda jumped out at me when I looked at the plan, when it was emailed around, that there isn't a lot in that area that had, I mean, granted they were smaller, you know, two-inch, maybe one-inch caliper trees that were cleared out of that zone, but for a couple of reasons, I'd like to see a little bit more shrub material brought in there, number one, ecologically and environmentally, I think it's a better condition, but number two, you know, it would prevent this from happening again where there's clearing in a zone that's not meant to be cleared, if it looks more, you want to support this more natural area.
If the board is looking for some, I'd call it replacement, I guess the hope would be that we're looking for, stand in the yard by that amount, and that would be the proposal regardless of what happens.
We could shift them into the zone here.
The hope would be that we're going to replace, it would be here up against this ledge. I hear what Kim's saying, you know, despite the ledge, that she'd like to, you know, ecologically.
I'd like to get to Kim's thoughts on the proposed limit of work line, Kim, where I have a lawn budding up there. If we shifted some of this list that I have going towards the, behind the shed, if I shift some of that material back up into that zone, between the proposed limit of work and the old approved limit of work line, back up under that canopy, in that remaining, showing as this space beyond.
I think she's talking about more.
This area here.
I don't think she's talking about shifting.
I think her comment reflected that, I'd like to address this area.
Yeah, that's her comment, but I think she's talking about not moving, I think she's talking about adding plantings in there.
Yeah, Steve, we had talked about things like...
Yep.
Blueberries, dogwoods, the blueberry, you know, sort of, you know, native understory type plant, that it doesn't necessarily have to be a screen of trees, it could be more shrub-like.
Got it.
Just to give it that sense of, you know, kind of pristine habitat.
Are you comfortable with that being outside, between the wood's edge as it exists now and the outside of my proposed limited work line? Do that?
Yeah, I keep on it on the limited work line, because that's what's really up to the board as to where they want to move.
So if I fill that...
Comfortable they are with moving that line.
Okay, if I fill that remaining open space in there, you know, call it this biggest, whitest area through there right now on the plan, that's the area we're focusing on right now.
Yeah, that area when you're standing with your back to the house.
That's right, straight away out, okay.
For me, it's easier, in this particular case, and Kim, this is a little bit for you, I sort of look at this as the front yard and the backyard, and they're almost separate in terms of projects, is that, am I crazy on that, or?
No, I think they are quite separate.
Correct.
I didn't have much additional comment on the front, I think that the trees were, as we identified on site, are the healthiest, and the ones that are viable. There's a lot of invasive in there, there's a lot of bitter trees that sort of strangled things out, and remaining trees really are not viable, but I do, I agree, I see them as two separate portions of the cross section.
And, you know, with my, you know, non-professional look, the front seems to be well thought out and good, would that be something that you would agree with?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm really uncomfortable with the back as it's proposed here.
I'm not quite, I'm not ready to sign off completely on the front yet.
Okay.
Because what concerns me is this view right there, and I'm sure you can see this, Kim, sitting across the table from me as you are, but, but the angled view from skating pond through to the existing house, where no new plantings are gonna go, but we're taking out that secondary buffer in the, between the house and the road, I mean, I wonder if a little bit more infill planting might be a good idea in here.
There's no room.
But I remember when I was standing at the site, well, you could see through there.
You can't, I mean, you can see through here, but not in this area, that's where the firs and the pines pick up.
Yeah, well, maybe I'll just go back out and look at it.
Yeah, that's where the fir, pines, maple spring, hemlocks. Continuing where the last evergreen drops off, get rid of the deciduous and do the taller evergreens.
So it could be my memory is failing me, I thought you could see through.
It's really heavy in there.
Okay, I'll take another look.
And it's like triple deep to, it really is, it's like triple deep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not saying this.
They've been established for, you know, eight years.
Photos.
Yeah, well, there's no, you know, I'm not saying that, all I'm saying is, there was no intent to say, let's find something that'll show it, I'm not gonna guarantee you can't see us back in the house, but it certainly doesn't really show.
Yeah, all right, I'll try.
But I can tell you that the idea of moving the limit of work line, sort of, you know, to catch up with the clearing that's been done, it doesn't make me feel good at all, and I don't, I mean, I just don't see any point in even moving the shed, because, I mean, it's, you're not moving it very far, and that just means that you're clearing out more of one area, you know, and...
Well, that's an area that was nothing there before. That's a, there was a road there.
There?
Yeah, that's not it.
There's an old road in there, there's nothing there.
Where?
Where the shedding moved. Where the shed should be moved, there's nothing in this whole zone right now.
Right, it's right here.
There's nothing back here.
You're talking about moving it here.
Yeah, it always has been. It used to be a driveway, it's airway. And it's open, the only thing that over crowds it is the two large oak trees at the end of the shed.
Well, I'm not, I mean, I don't hear a big, a good case for moving the limit of work line, I mean, it's kind of a convenient thing, you know, to accommodate, you know, the change here that you wanna do and stuff, it's like, you know.
I guess the case would be, yeah, maybe you'd describe it as a catch-up, but the intention all along was it's very little backyard, and to just get, we're not talking a lot of additional backyard, we're talking, we're talking right here, that's all we're talking, and if we have to pay a price by, you know, putting back there and really offering it there, that's something they're willing to do, he just wants a little more backyard and...
There's a lot of yard around this house, it's over here toward the pond, over on the other side, there's a lot of green space and yard space, so, you know, I mean, grandchildren can play frisbee, you know, I'm for that, you know, so, I mean, give me a good reason to think about.
Yeah, the focal point for this house, especially this, this does not get used at all, David, because of this, and even on the slope, this is not getting, this is the lead field, and I guess you could say the family could play over there, but the focal point of this house is the patio out back, and here, and there's that drop, it's just, that's the focal point of the house, and we're just...
We also looked through, Jonathan looked through the history of it, couldn't find a discussion, if you will, of why the line ended up where it is.
Yeah, it was suggested we take a look.
Yeah, we did, it was suggested that we looked for that, we didn't find anything that, that even spoke about why.
To find out why they would put it so close to the house.
Mrs. Joey's not with Metro West, like, he doesn't remember either, but they call him, but...
Well, but it just didn't make sense why it would be so close to the house, especially at that time, there...
It's because it was all wooded, it was, there really was a transition between non-wooded and wooded, right about that area, we were trying to save that screening as much as possible, trying to save that woodland as much as possible, not realizing that somebody would just come and cut it all down.
I mean, you've got, you've got about, I mean, between the approved limit of work and the house is what, about sixty feet, right, and you're talking about adding another twenty to forty feet, depending on where in here you are, you know, I mean, it's not like, I mean, it's not even possible.
Is there a slope here, like, why are you putting this new wall?
It's just to maximize this upper yard field, so how?
Right, but if you, if this weren't a grassy area and you restored the do not disturb zone, which...
Which is only really in this area right here.
Right, so if you did that, and then you moved this up into here, then you, then this whole area could be lawn area.
Right. I'll take that suggestion in a minute, if I could move this wall to the back for the approved limit line.
Which wall?
This wall, this...
Does this wall exist?
No. It does not, so if I could take this, push it to the approved line.
If you restore this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, I don't understand why you wouldn't do that.
That would make sense to me.
Because we're hoping to do this.
Oh, but you would take the other.
I think it's, I guess it's a suggestion.
It'd be a lot better.
I guess it's a good suggestion, yeah.
Because you don't...
It would really widen.
You don't break your...
It widens it exactly.
You don't break your play space up with the wall.
Right, and then you can restore this area, which is what we wanted you to do, and then you just move this element.
I still like the idea of bringing mature trees, some of those larger transplants to the rear to help with our screening, because screening has failed, by the way, under their site plan.
And you don't need to move the shed, though, either.
Well, let me get your input on that just real quick, I don't wanna bother you guys up, because I know you have two fifty-five on forty, but leaving the shed, what is good to stay, do I get it permitted? Is that something for you guys?
What I'd like to do is...
Well, you could document it with the new plans.
Yeah, we need to, we'll need to document it with the new plans, plus I'd like to have the other board members here to make the final decision with us, especially Roy Chantelbache, who was involved in the discussions, I think he needs to at least contribute what he understood, what the discussions were, but I think, I think we've gotten some good direction there.
That's good, I like it.
This is a good suggestion. I think, I think it would be helpful to take a look at what the consequences of that are. David mentioned that the noise, you know, we'd like to see what the strategy is for that, if we decide to keep the shed, no lights on the shed.
No, there aren't now.
I know, I don't wanna turn it into the cabin in the woods, you know, lights all around it, if we decide, and we need to make that decision, I'd like for us all to make that decision.
Okay.
And, I forget whether, did Kim have any suggestions down here that I wasn't hearing up on?
She's actually gonna suggest that I push the front purchase into that zone. You still there, Kim?
I'm here.
Yeah, I just don't remember, whether, in the front, Kim, was there anything else that you wanted to see in the front that this current site plan didn't show?
No, no, my biggest concerns were that, you know, the area in the rear, and I wanted to see a schedule, planting schedule.
Planting schedule, okay, so if we could take a look at that revision, get a detailed planting schedule together, get some information on...
Pull that area up on the rear.
Yeah, get some information on the...
The tangential areas, yeah, yeah.
And if there's any additional site lighting, we need to know about it.
Everything exists, everything stays the same.
Jim questioned the area where we'll add plants where they weren't proposed, you're talking about plants that'll get large, but not canopy-type trees, from my layman's understanding, is that right?
And Kim, what we're talking about are the area in the back that was cleared.
Yeah.
That moving their proposed field stone wall to the approved limit of work, and then behind that doing plantings, and Jonathan's asking about the size of plantings that we would think about in that area, and I thought you were talking about shrubs, but I...
Yes, I was.
Just wanted to clarify.
Steve and I talked at length about the varieties, and he's clear on what I'm looking for up there.
It's also trees, don't you want trees in that area?
We talked about some service areas and understories.
That is on the list.
About primacy, primary...
All right, so we're gonna need to see this area re-proposed.
Yes.
But you would be putting trees in this area, not just shrubs?
I would leave the trees in the deeper background of the open area, and then come in with... The service areas and things like she's talking about, the Atlantic, these things will get, as shrubs, will get eighteen, twenty feet tall, it's your mid-size understory, the other things, like the blueberry, stays as down as your lower, lower story, and so it's a natural understory woodland edge.
Sounds like a plan.
That's what...
Wait, are you looking for more trees?
That's what those list.
Well, I don't know, I just wanna make sure that, Kim, you understand that we're talking about bringing the plantings right up to the original approved limit of work line, and if so, would that just be understory and no trees?
In my opinion, yes, because there's a lot of more mature forests beyond, and...
In the area, there's some transition. In the area that was removed, the trees are gonna stay all back here.
So no trees added here?
No, that's all gonna be what she just discussed.
So this whole area then would be your same, all the way up to the approved limit of work?
Yes, so basically, what she just was describing is all of this area. Last question, what would that be, doing the rain change? Nothing, just leave the grades alone.
So what about this drop right there, you're talking about pushing it back?
Push the wall back, it's still gonna generally stay at two feet on it.
What about the columns in the front?
These two.
That's one of the things I'd like Roy's take on, I don't know whether you talked to these, you didn't talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay. Think about it, we'll think about it, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this anyway, so we'll make the decision on that, and the final decision on the shed next time.
The shed should stay over here, I don't think it should move over there, so that's inside, it's outside of the work.
Yeah.
Well, it just clips the old approved line, so, I mean, let's just...
Put it on the, put it on the plan there, so it's dark.
Leave it there.
So it's dark, and everything leaves.
Take this out behind like that.
That's it. You'll just set it aside there, give it aside you want it to stay, you may decide now.
Well, actually, it's not quite on it, it can actually move.
All right.
All right.
All right, so, so what are we gonna do, take a look at this?
Fucking combination of all of them.
Can I draw consensus?
How long do you think Glove Lane will take, the cobblestone of Glove Lane, that allocated a half an hour for?
Fifteen minutes.
Okay, if there, we can allocate fifteen minutes for it on the 13th at ten fifty.
Can you get this stuff done immediately?
I have to. Pardon?
Stuff it on the 13th.
No.
Just with the Labor Day weekend, I'm gonna have to.
He's not gonna be ready.
Okay.
It's just, I would like a little bit more.
I can't do it on the 17th.
But you got plenty of time.
I got, well, I'm not taking any transplants out until they lose their leaves, I'm not doing anything in this until October, November.
There's no room on the 17th?
What's your next date?
October 1st? We haven't really talked about...
October 1st. I'm more comfortable with that, so I can really...
So, it'll be...
Do another rendering.
It'll be at seven forty-five.
If you have time.
Everybody have a plan, it's right.
You can still plant some new ones after October.
I can plant all up till February.
Really?
Absolutely.
All those, everything.
Come on by and have a look.
Okay, so, um, seven forty-five on October first.
Perfect, I like it. So don't wait on these, on this...
Yeah, you have to have everything in at least.
Okay, Kimberly, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, it's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Good night.
Thank you. I asked you to, that was really a good night.
I agree with you.
Those get recycled.
Yeah, my great graphic day.
I'm sorry, I just, I got color ones.